And just our own public realm framework, thinking about this district much more purposefully. You know, how is it going to grow and so on? Whether that has a time limit associated with it, we haven't proposed that. It could be proposed, but I do think it's pertinent. On the other side, I really think it's more about how I would like the planning department to proceed, which is there is a strategic and tactical component to planning as well. We could, you know, take steps today and something would happen. Would it be the best outcome? Would it leverage the value of the streetcar that is coming? Maybe not. We get one bite at the apple. And this piece is critically important to the future visitor experience and user experience of convention goers. I see them working together.
Okay, two quick questions. You just said one bite of the apple. Is there a limit at how many times a rezoning study could happen? Like if we did something tonight and then a year from now, there was a proposal to rezone something again, is that not allowed?
No, I guess what I meant is rezoning would then have a consequence, which is development. And that is, you know, that could be a 30-year pause. And so my position is, let's do it right. I don't think there is a huge gap in terms of, I think a lot of people have the same values, the same quality of outcome in mind. I'm strategic and tactical, and so I would like to take other steps first in advance of this step.
Okay, what about a timeframe from these studies? Is this recommendations coming next six months, year, 18 months, two years, three years? Do we have a sense?
I don't think we have a timeframe yet for the master plan, the tourism master plan in place. Maybe someone could speak to it here, I'm not sure. The hospitality zone assessment, I believe, is about a six-month endeavor. The public realm framework will hopefully be moving through council in the first quarter of 2016. The streetcar has been moving very slowly, slower than anticipated, particularly through this EA period. We hope we see legislative action in 2016, but it's not a guarantee.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, commissioners, are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner McGreen.
I think in the initial recommendations that came out, I'm just thinking of one specific property, the LPM apartment tower.
Yes.
Was initially proposed to be down zoned to, I think it was OR2?
I think it was OR3.
OR3? And then we ended up keeping it the same because we didn't want to create, you know, non-conforming uses and make things out of scale. So why didn't we apply that to kind of all of the buildings around Loring Park? I mean, there's quite a few.
So the LPM project was a specific instance where we would have been creating non-conforming uses on the ground floor that were just moving in. And so we try as a value in a rezoning study to limit the amount of non-conforming uses. So this was the very specific instance that we found where that would have been a negative effect almost immediately because of the limited amount and square footage of commercial and retail that can go into OR districts.
So what was the uses more so than just the sale?
That's what it was.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. I know we talked about this at COW, but I think it'd be helpful to understand just more details about the other consequences of changing the zoning from OR3 to OR2. So are there uses? So there's the built form question.
Sure.
And we, you know, again, some of the tools that we use around that, I mean, we have a limited set of tools that we're using to try to control a built form. But since we're using use zoning, what are the other consequences of changing that zoning there?
So besides the height, so in OR3, proprietors are allowed six stories by right. In OR2, they're allowed four stories by right. The only other differences, and I'll lean on Jason to confirm this, but the only other differences are in the OR3 district, major institutions like hospitals and universities are allowed, and they're not allowed in OR2. Is that the main use difference from OR2 to OR3? Okay, yes. So those are really the only differences.
All right. Are there any other questions of staff? Actually, I have a question along those same lines. Can you remind me what the maximum FAR in OR2 and OR3 is?
Jason?
Oh, it's in the chart. I'll try to read that. Okay, so 2.5 versus 3.5. And do you have a general sense? And I don't know that you did this level of analysis, but do you have a sense of the typical apartment buildings that are in that Loring Hill area? What is the FAR? Is it closer to 2.5 or 3.5?
No, I don't. As you recall, we did do an analysis over the summer that we brought during our outreach and to you during committee of the whole. We had one of our urban designers on our team, and he did a great visualization analysis of the hill to see how OR2 would accommodate buildings on basically what are service parking lots right now on Loring Hill. And so that showed the setbacks and the height. And it was our analysis as staff that the OR2 really encapsulated a lot of the ideas in the plan related to basically a step effect going up the hill, as well as setbacks for light and air. There's a lot of mansions on the hill that have that character, and OR really supports that type of development.
Okay, thank you. And are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. And just so I have a sense, how many of you wish to speak on this item? We have several of you. So I just encourage you to keep your remarks fairly brief and not simply repeat things that other people have said. So we can start over on this side of the room. Who would like to speak first?
You're fine.
Please go ahead. That's fine. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I just, my name is Christopher Hofer, and I'm the current board chair of the Citizens for Loring Park Community. I'd like to take about two minutes just to tell you how we got here. I know you've had an opportunity to review the plan, and I just must say that it's a pleasure to be here because it marks the home stretch of what has been a long and worthwhile process for the neighborhood. Others from the neighborhood will address specific issues that will help you with your work here tonight. What I'd like to do is talk about that process. Now, as you all know, as Beth has mentioned, the city council approved the master plan in the fall of 2013, but clearly the work had begun much sooner than that. And the ability to proceed with this master plan was a direct result of the neighborhood's 2009 NRP Phase 2 plan. And that produced a funding source when coupled with thousands of hours of volunteer work permitted a viable master plan process to begin. And our goal was to create a gold standard of community outreach, engagement, participation, and have that occur through a transparent and inclusive process. And I believe this has happened. A steering committee was founded with John Van Heel as co-chair and sadly Robert Cook, who died and will not be able to see your work here tonight with his plan, what he put so much time and energy into. The steering committee laid out four general phases of work: community involvement, discovery, synthesizing the results, and developing the master plan. This ultimately involved over 1,500 participants during 2011 and 2012. And if you look at page seven and eight of the master plan, it highlights the community engagement that was undertaken, specifically the 15 separate community meetings, workshops, and focus groups held, in addition to the 10 specific stakeholder interviews of pivotal and representative stakeholders. In this process, were involved park staff, city staff, elected representatives, business owners, landlords, tenants, students, homeowners, condo boards, institutional representatives, including the churches, and MCTC, including neighborhoods, students, parishioners, and small business owners. And the workshop meetings and focus groups covered by this diverse group of neighbors in the Loring Park community covered the history of the neighborhood, the creative businesses that we seek to grow, the historic preservation that we want to occur, as well as multimodal transportation, walkability, livability, arts and culture, harm in place, Nicollet Avenue. The list goes on, and I'm sure you've seen it in the master plan. This wide and deep involvement in the transparent and inclusive process yielded a terrific master plan, and one which stands to the standard of the gold standard that we saw at the beginning, one of community engagement and participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Chairman Brown, commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is John Van Heel. I was the chair of the Loring Park Neighborhood Master Plan Steering Committee. The purpose of the rezoning study is to align zoning with city policy. My message to you is that you should move forward in making these changes, not just because the Loring Park master plan is now city policy, but because the policies the plan contains are fully consistent with the larger policies and goals of our city. In fact, I can proudly hold the neighborhood's plan up as a shining example of how to grow a community and increase density, and how to pursue a more sustainable environment, and how to preserve cherished historic buildings and landscapes. All of these are key parts of the city's comprehensive plan. Historians have identified 34 buildings in our neighborhood that are historically significant. 20 of these 34 buildings are located on Loring Hill. This district makes up just one quarter of the neighborhood. And while the freeway ring surrounding downtown may seem to make any place within it fair game for the highest building heights possible, I think the nature of Loring Hill asks us to look deeper. The unique hillside setting on the opposite side of Loring Hill, on the opposite side of Loring Park from downtown sets it apart from anywhere else in the Loring neighborhood. The character of the Hill's mansion district is closer to the adjacent residential area to the south of the freeway, where allowable heights are lower than anywhere in Loring Park, let alone the rest of downtown. Changing from the six-story OR3 zoning to four-story OR2 will not change the fact that the hill is already one of the most densely populated areas in the city, but it will help protect the remaining historic fabric that the community so cherishes. The changes in zoning to the OR2 office residential high-density zoning district is appropriate zoning that aligns with city policy. It is appropriate that you support this change. Loring Hill is the only place in the entire neighborhood that the community intended to lower allowable heights, building heights. The B4N Downtown Neighborhood Zoning District was created by the Minneapolis Planning District in order to comply with city policy that says that the height of the downtown core should step down as it approaches adjacent neighborhoods. This zoning district has already been implemented in the North Loop and parts of Loring Park. As you know, Loring Park neighborhood was a cooperative project between the neighborhood and the city. The 10-story height represented in the built form plan was the one height designation that was directly connected to a specific zoning district. That zoning district was the 10-story B4N district. We thought we were incorporating city policy. Did we think that this zoning was restricting anything from being built higher? No. Because of Loring Pond and the Shoreland Overlay District, virtually every development in our neighborhood is required to go through a conditional use permit approval process. When the 36-story LPM tower was being developed on a parcel that was split zoned, it was the city that chose B4N zoning as the best zoning for the development. The neighborhood master plan provides specific tools for Nicollet Avenue and near downtown areas in order to assist developers seeking added height. We think B4N works under the plan, but if the city would like to defer action on near downtown areas that the planning department initially recommended for B4N zoning, I do not think a single resident or neighborhood business would have any issue whatsoever. However, Nicollet Avenue, south of Grant Street, is very different. It should be noted that neither the Convention Center nor Minneapolis are requesting a deferral on zoning on this stretch of Nicollet Avenue. This is a very important part. This street is very important to the Loring Park neighborhood. We love some of the restaurants and businesses there, but I think even those businesses will agree that the neighborhood does not cherish the current character of this low-scale, gap-toothed corridor. We want a place that we want to go to. The vision of the neighborhood is not that our stretch of Nicollet be an extension of downtown. It is also not that it should be an extension of the one- and two-story Eat Street that is found further south. The vision of the neighborhood is that Loring Village be its own unique destination that serves the neighborhood and the adjacent convention center. It is around this vision that the neighborhood embraced establishing an activity center. The staff report notes that the activity center was the topic of great debate. This seems to suggest that there was significant disagreement. There wasn't. If there was a debate, it was not within the neighborhood, but rather between the neighborhood and council member Goodman, who opposed the activity center and who was opposed to increasing allowable heights. I respect those views, but I do not think that they represent the views of Loring residents or Nicollet Avenue businesses. There was, and I think is, an equal level of consensus across the whole neighborhood that we should protect Loring Hill and that we should encourage greater height, density, and intensity of use on Nicollet Avenue. Citizens for Loring Park Community is supporting upzoning on Nicollet to C3A. While it does not match the full allowable height designated in the master plan, in other regards, it is believed to be a good fit. Nightclubs had been a concern, however, the zoning study revealed that because of residential adjacencies, they are not allowed. Nicollet business owners believe that it would be good to have hotels as part of a future development mix, and they are included in an allowable use under the plan. The staff report has an extensive section regarding potential dangers of development on Nicollet. I think they represent the same dangers that there are wherever development happens in the context of an existing city. Loring residents and Nicollet business owners are aware of these dangers, but they are even more aware of vacant streets, a vacant street that draws criminal activity. This presents a far bigger and more immediate threat. Certainly, new development is not the only solution, but the neighborhood does believe that it is an important part. The neighborhood has struggled for 20 years to draw new development here. Developers simply will not take the risk, given downtown area land prices and given the current zoning. You should reject the reasons provided by the planning department for deferring action on Nicollet Avenue, south of Grant Street. The Loring Park master plan is the most extensive community-driven master plan in the city. Planning at the Convention Center and for the proposed Nicollet Central Streetcar Line have been fully considered and incorporated. Land use studies have already been conducted for the transit line. The notion that a tourism master plan or a downtown maintenance plan might trump an official city small-area plan should not be accepted. There may be dangers in moving forward with rezoning, but please consider carefully what you risk by deferring action. You risk seeing the current light and crime on Nicollet get worse. It is already a threat to the attractiveness and livability of the entire Loring Park neighborhood. This is also a threat to the Convention Center and by extension, a threat to the entire city. And by deferring action, you risk the faith of the community, which dedicated countless hours to the city to make it better, only to see politics interfere. Growing our city and increasing density is the policy of the city and of the Loring Park master plan. Growing our commercial transportation corridors is something that residents can understand and get behind. When a neighborhood supports this policy, you should support that neighborhood. I believe that it is the city's duty under state law to implement a change in zoning. I hope you will support doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My remarks will take about three and a half minutes. I'm Gary Simpson, and my wife and I have been condominium residents of Loring Park in the Loring Hill neighborhood for only 16 months. We're new, and snapshots by newbies can offer a fresh perspective on what might otherwise be so obvious as to be overlooked. Thank you for allowing me to offer two points for your consideration. After considering numerous locations in both St. Paul and Minneapolis, we joyfully settled on a condominium on the Loring Hill for two reasons, and both are significant. First, the cityscape of Loring Park is second to none. I'll not say more about that, except to say that after 16 months, we have not in any way been disappointed. I walked here. Second, and not to be underestimated for us and for this hearing, is the abundant and rich social capital that radiates around and through the Loring Park neighborhood. The wellspring of this amazing social capital is the Citizens for Loring Park Community. Before buying our condo, I researched this neighborhood organization and have intensified my research by becoming an active participant of CLPC, attending my first annual meeting in 2014, and being elected to the board and becoming its secretary not too long thereafter. By the way, I'm a researcher by profession. I teach both neighborhood research methodologies and the practice of leadership at Luther Seminary and hold one of our chairs there. I've now had a firsthand rigorous look at the planning process that has gone into our Loring Park master plan and our Loring Park neighborhood rezoning study. It's easily the gold standard of neighborhood participatory planning. That's my first point. My second point is to urge all of you during your deliberation to likewise, unflinchingly recognize this gold standard of participatory planning that has permeated our rezoning study, and the truly remarkable good-faith effort that our Loring Park neighborhood rezoning study represents, as well as the generative goodwill and social trust that our study has created within this part of our wonderful city of lakes. Before coming to Minneapolis a year ago, my wife and I were activist leaders within the Lake Phelan neighborhood of St. Paul, increasing the participation of girls in neighborhood athletics probably 100-fold, and helping to establish and design the new Lake Phelan Recreation Center a mere half a block from our house. We were even recognized with a St. Paul Citizenship Award for our efforts. Before coming to the Twin Cities 25 years ago, I was a religious leader in Portland, Oregon, where I chaired, among other things, the board of the largest hunger program in Oregon, and was asked to chair the Oregon Governors Task Force on Hunger, which undertook a two-year public planning process that changed the face of hunger in Oregon, a change that I'm proud to say continues to make Oregon and Portland a national leader on reducing hunger vulnerability. I say these things not to brag, but just to let you know that I know the gold standard of public planning processes when I see it, and just how precious is the public trust and social capital that gold standard processes create. Such public trust and social capital is also in our era both rare and fragile. As elected leaders and employed servants of our good city, I urge you with all my heart and head to likewise recognize and truly respect the good faith and generative goodwill that radiates throughout our Loring Park neighborhood rezoning study, and to do nothing that injures or diminishes the precious social trust that this study represents and creates. Indeed, I implore you even to help increase the citizen bonds of social capital during your deliberations on behalf of our efforts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Kissler, and I live at 300 Clifton Avenue up on Loring Hill. Lived there for a couple of years now. I'm a little nervous about talking today, but I'm kind of emboldened a little bit because the staff report is in support of changing this to an OR2 zone, and it seems pretty commonsensical. But when I bought my house a couple of years ago and wanted to turn it into a bed and breakfast, it didn't seem like the process was very commonsensical at all. It was a very difficult process to go through. As a matter of fact, I was only able to do it because of the parameters that were set in the neighborhood master plan. It floundered in city meetings for a long period of time, through multiple owners, as a matter of fact, until the neighborhood group actually stepped in and allowed us to start working on a bed and breakfast on Loring Hill. Many of you probably haven't heard of a lot of bed and breakfasts in Minneapolis, and the reason why is because they were inadvertently made illegal through probably the 50s and 60s, through layers of laws that were set up to actually outlaw boarding houses. And in the master plan, there was a, part of the focus of it was to try and allow to have a bed and breakfast district on Loring Hill. Earlier, in one of the testimonies, they stated that the only difference between OR3 and OR2, besides a height restriction, would be the institutions, but that's not true. One of the big differences between OR2 and OR3 zoning change is that in OR3 zoning, bed and breakfasts are not an acceptable use, they're only a conditional use. In an OR2 zoning district, they are an acceptable use. In order to have a bed and breakfast district, you've got to have some character to the neighborhood, and the OR2 zoning would also preserve that character in the district. That character in the district would be preserved by the OR2 zoning and in the individual mansions. So another big difference between the OR3 and the OR2 zoning is that in an OR2 zoning, you're allowed to have two residential units in a mansion. Well, my mansion, I wanted to have, which you're supposed to have for a bed and breakfast, a single-family residence, and then allowed to have the, which is a brand-new law now since I went through the permitting process, to have an outbuilding be a second residence on the property. Well, if it's in the OR3 zoning area, then OR3 makes you cut the mansion up into three different apartments somehow, or more, because it's a minimum of three different residential units that you have to have in an OR3. So the only reason I was allowed to even have a bed and breakfast on the hill in a mansion is because it's on the National Historic Register. So even with the change in zoning, it would be impossible for someone to turn any of those other mansions into a bed and breakfast, because, again, of these layers of laws that keep people from turning these bed and breakfasts into, and that's beyond the scope of this talk. All that I would like to encourage the council to do today is to be able to downgrade the zoning so that it'll make it another step forward. There's been three laws, two major laws. One is the mother-in-law law. The other one is to increase to five bedrooms in a bed and breakfast, which can make a larger house profitable to have as a bed and breakfast. And then this would be another step in the right direction. So the master plan has done two things. One is recognized the possibility of having a hospitality zone on Loring Hill, and it's also recognized the vulnerability of Loring Hill to development. If a Loring Hill is allowed to be developed willy-nilly, which it has been in the past with inner states and with gigantic buildings, we're going to completely lose the last vestige of the mansions, or at least the character of the mansions. And it's beyond just the mansions. There's 510 Groveland, there's two beautiful churches that are very close in proximity, and then there's the Northwestern Mutual Life Insurance Building there. And all of those are very contiguous and create a very unique character in that neighborhood, which can be changed dramatically by, one, unlimited height restrictions, well, excuse me, by six-story height restrictions, but then also by other uses that are forced on these mansions and forced on these buildings by higher zoning. There was also tremendous foresight in the master plan in looking into hospitality in this way. A lot of people think of bed and breakfast as an antiquated institution, but the sharing community is actually incredibly, the sharing economy is a new economy, and it's revved up in the last couple of years in things like Uber and Lyft and Airbnb. We've talked about hotels around the Convention Center, but very quietly, Airbnb has turned into the largest hotelier here in Minneapolis, and it's the largest hotelier in the world. And Airbnb is a venue for people to be able to use, both houses and mansions, to be able to bring visitors into Minneapolis. What better location than to showcase our unbelievable city through this little gem that we've got on Loring Hill? that we've got on Loring Hill? Our master plan is out in front when it comes to predicting a hospitality trend and promoting Loring Park neighborhood as a site for historic tourism. And Norman and I commend the plan and the foresight that this plan in regards to its trends in hospitality. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And next speaker. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your service. I'm George Puzek. I live at 1780 Girard Avenue South in Minneapolis. I represent the Clifton LLC, the owner of a 22-unit apartment building at 322 Clifton Avenue on Loring Hill. This building was built in 1964. When I purchased the property in 2004, I made a long-term investment in the neighborhood based on the property's OR3 zoning, its views of Loring Park, and the skyline, and its transit-oriented location. I urge you to apply the citywide perspective and the city's stated policy of increasing density. The city's land use policy is to add density near the downtown core and along transit corridors. The Downtown Council's 2025 plan seeks to double downtown's residential population to 70,000 residents and add 15,000 housing units by 2025. That's only 10 years from now. Downzoning on Loring Hill conflicts with these adopted policies. Downzoning Loring Hill is unnecessary and overly broad. The Shoreland Overlay District already limits building heights on Loring Hill. Although the staff report makes vague references to Loring